Be quick and concise and thorough and enlightening and educational and everything else. It's all order. As Mr. Martindale alluded to, you know, based on the Center for Reform School Systems definition, it's in board policy that we do this. Each of the six groups do it once a semester, and so technology is the one we're going to do this year. And so the I see the other ones in there if you wanted to, but the one in the red is the one that's important. Just remember that. So based on the guidance, we're supposed to cover these things. Are students and employees safe? Are we secure? Are our policies being followed? Is it fairness? And are all of our major business systems are effective and efficient? And we will cover kind of all of these items throughout the presentation. And the outline of what we're going to go over today is a program description. We're going to talk about what we do, how we do it, system integrity, how we make sure what we're doing is correct and, you know, in order. How do we measure ourselves? How do we make sure we're doing what we are supposed to be doing to take care of our teachers and our faculty and staff? And more importantly, the taxpayers' funds, so the taxpayers are being wisely, you know, or our money is being spent wisely. And then if there's any policy recommendations, we'll cover that at the end as well. So this section, just real quick, you know, I'm going to go through all of this stuff, and I'm going to, I'm going through fast so we can get to the meat of the, so just bear with me. Cost trends, we're going to go over how we're broken down, what services, how our divisions are broken out and everything else and contracts. So we're going through each one of those as we go through. So first is our purpose. So why are we here? I like to, here's our official department purpose, but I kind of allude to, everybody's got a special teacher they remember. You know, you remember that kindergarten teacher, Ms. Kellen, is my kids, they love her. They will remember her for the rest of her life. They will never remember technology. That's good, because my goal is that they never have to think about us. It just works. So we're in the backend, we're that little duck with the legs paddling underneath us. So that is our purpose, and that's what I tell our guys, is we just want to make sure that nobody has to think about it. It just works. And I think from what you're going to see in the metrics and everything else, it's, it's working. So I think we're very proud of what we've been able to put together and that the kids don't know what we do in the backend of it, except for when their wifi is slow, then we know. Did it just work? There you go. And you, you will appreciate, there's a picture later on that you may appreciate on that. But to make sure the department is doing what we're supposed to do, we also have a couple of different, you know, district-wide policies, procedures that we put together. One is our long-range technology plan. So we gather every five years, we get, you know, committee members, board members, I think Ms. Nolan was on the last one with us. We get faculty, staff, parents, students, and we just ask them, what's the direction? Where do we need to be going? So based on that conversation we had in 2019, we developed these three goals. So teaching and learning, professional development, communication, and an ecosystem. So I highlighted in there the key words that kind of stood out to us and kind of came out of the committee is that digital resources, we've put a lot of effort into getting digital resources to our kids that are relevant. So we can spend money, but we want to make sure it's spent wisely. And so when you see things relevant will come through multiple times in this presentation. Professional development, if we get resources, we also have to teach the people how to use the resources, teach the students how to use it purposefully. So wise choices again. We want to make sure that we're doing, spending taxpayers' money where it needs to be. And flexible is on ecosystem, because unfortunately, last year we got to experience flexibility on a massive scale. So whatever we do, we've got to be flexible, and I think last year kind of proved that we, we were doing it right, because we were able to take on purpose, on in-person to remote and then back to in-person, you know, on a drop of a hat. And I, all of these things were decided before COVID hit, and it kind of proved to itself that yes, we were on the right path and our committee was on the right path. The other thing we kind of go by is our strategic plan. Many of y'all were involved in that. So goal fives and goal six specifically, we are included in it as technology-wise. And you'll see a lot of these things, and you'll see a lot of results based on this on the next slide of, you know, what is included in goal five. And, you know, increased number of classroom sets of devices, infrastructure enhancements, safety and security. We covered all of that in bond, and we've covered it in other things that we've done. Goal six is the same, is more of the person side of it, you know. So how do we train our people on using these things correctly? And there's that we're purposeful again. So again, lots of words on there, but essentially just remember that we've set together, we've taken, we've heard what people have given us in our committees, and we've implemented it. And, you know, it's going to be shown on our next slide, which is the outcomes. So part of the bond was a substantial number of dollars towards increasing devices. Two thousand of those were on the board agenda in two thou, in January. Those should be hitting the dock tomorrow, is what I've been told, so we can get them into kids' hands. We've increased the bandwidth of the internet. Any of y'all that have kids in the school, you know, how many have come home and said, you know, the wifi is slow, or this slows down, or whatever? Well, we only have so much bandwidth, and so we were able to take more money and put towards that to increase bandwidth. Again, coming based on what the long-term plan and the strategic goal said we had to do. Wireless access coverages. Nobody has wires anymore. They all have these. And so we took that and we implemented that as well. Cybersecurity, we'll go into later on, safety enhancements. And then the next things is digital learning resource expansions. Dr. Trammell and her group has been very vigilant in making sure we increase the number of digital resources we have purposefully. So we want to make sure we're getting the right resources in the right hands. And so we've made a concerted effort on that, too. So that again is an outcome based on those two documents that we've used, our long range plan and our strategic plan. And then relevant and timely assessments, because is it working? You know, that's where, again, the MAP program that Dr. Trammell has put in place, we can now see, is this making sense? Is it, are we getting results? And so all of that goes into the place of how technology is kind of used as, as our guiding factors. And if you really want to go into it, we kind of touch everything on the board policy, but these are the specific ones that we hit. I'll just, I'll throw them out there. If you want to go into deeper, we can definitely go into deeper, but I don't think most people want to go through that. So who are we? From a staff perspective, obviously, we've got five different pillars. You've got the systems group, which is all of our servers, all of the backend stuff that nobody ever sees. They are back there, we kind of laugh at them because they don't like lights. They kind of crawl in their cave, and they work on their servers, and they work on, you know, all the things that you never see. That's them. Network systems, that is our phones, that is our switches, that is our wifi. As you can see, we've got, you know, five people involved in that division. Campus technology coordinator, which is Ms. Missy Broyles, and we've got, I say ten people in there. It's eight campus technicians that are actually on the campus. One of us is our lead tech that handles a lot of the issues before it gets escalated to the systems. And then we have our lovely Brandy, who takes care of help desk, and she is a godsend. I will tell you that right now. She is the, if they're not talking to the campus technician on campus, they're calling her, and that is our face for our teachers and our students and our, actually now, parents, because they call the help desk, too, for problems and issues, and she resolves it very quickly. Technology coordinator.
Can I clarify on the coordinator?
Campus folks, those campus technicians, are these, is this the role where the teachers are actually doing the technology support, or these are dedicated?
These are, these are dedicated. Yes, and I should have, I apologize. Yes, please interrupt me, because I will talk fast, and stop me. But yes, what you're alluding to is the campus tech facilitators, and those are teachers that are, receive a stipend to help out for curriculum side of the house. They do a lot of other helps, because as you can see, we have eight campus technicians. We have nineteen campuses. So they can't be everywhere at all time, and so they do help on that. But yeah, these are the guys that are running around in little white vans, plugging and wires, unplugging the wires and things like that.
So follow-up question on that. What about respond at time if they're not there? If a teacher has an issue in the middle of class, it obviously has to be dealt with rather quickly, and we don't have a technician every campus.
Yes. So what we do is, we categorize, you know, levels. So if it's, if it's an emergency and takes down the entire district, then yes, we roll right away. And usually, our principal will get ahold of us. If it's a teacher that has an issue, the projector goes out. You know, we've always heard the comment, you know, I'm not supposed to say it a whole lot, but if the projector goes out, learning is all, all learning is stopped. Well, you know, our teachers are more skilled in that. They can adjust. But it's a crisis when you've got thirty kids looking at it. So if something like that happens, you know, we usually have a three-day resolution time. I will tell you, it's a lot faster than that. If it's taking down the whole class, they get to it really quickly. And what usually happens, they're not supposed to, but most of my campus technicians, we've been hiring the past six years, more of a customer service-oriented person. So they may not be as strong in the technical skills, because we can train up to technical skills, but the customer service. So even though they're not supposed to give their cell phones, a lot of the technicians have given their cell phones out. So they will reach out, the teachers know, and they'll reach out real quick and say, hey, I'm having an issue, help. And they come. But if they can't get a response from that, then sometimes they will get ahold of that campus technician facilitator, will also help. So it's kind of a multi-pronged approach that we try to do, but we try to keep those critical situations in check as fast as we can. Is that answer? Okay. So we, and, and a lot of other things, too, is they will, you'll be amazed at the tools. I'll go back to Brandy at the help desk and our technology coordinator, which is Shannon Long, which everybody knows Shannon. They are able to resolve a lot of issues remotely. We've got a lot of remote tools. They can get on the phone. They can log into their computer and fix things like, and if it's physical, like, you know, the bulb is blown or whatever, that's a different issue. But we try to resolve a lot of that stuff through remotely, because we're trying to be smarter, you know, in what we use and how we spend our resources, because there's just, again, there's not enough money to go around to get enough technicians. So anyway. And so again, going on to technology coordinator, it's Ms. Shannon Long. So she is the one that helps translate everything, because again, the systems people, and we joke about them being in the cave, well, they also speak computers. So they don't speak teachers. And so Shannon is wonderful, because she's come out of the classroom and she helps us translate things. And so when you see the wonderful memes and the emails, and that's all Shannon, taking what we talk in our little world and converting to what it makes sense in the real world. And so we love her for that. And our other associate is Julie Sample, who is a godsend, too, as well, because she's been all areas of the school, and she knows how to translate that as well. And the computer MIS systems, I call it computer services. A lot of people call it IT data systems. Anyway, they're the ones that take care of all the financial and the student information systems. So all of the backend, you know, reports that we have to do and everything else, that is that group. So very important to the group, because that directly impacts our reports that go to the state, which affects funding. So that is kind of how we're broken down. I alluded a little bit to on how we hire, based on we want customer support for technicians, but we have other qualifications that we do look at. So we do look at our campus-based technicians, the guys that are on the street, you know, really turning the screws. And a lot of them maybe will have college, a lot of them don't, but they have the skills. And so we like to get the kids that have A-plus certification. I say kids, and they're all younger than me. A-plus certification, net plus certification, it's just a way of industry-wise saying, you know, they're certified, they know what they're supposed to do, and they're quality people. So we do look for those. Network services, CCNA, I'm throwing a lot of acronyms out there. Those are just different ways to verify that they know what they're supposed to do. Those are industry certifications. To encourage our students, or students, again, they're younger than me, so you have to forgive me. We have a pay-for certification program. So we encourage them to get more training. We encourage them to go out and get these certifications. And there's a little bonus that we can put onto their salary to encourage them to keep going. Training again, we, when they come in, we take them and we let them shadow for two to three months, one of our more senior people to kind of get the feel of how we do campus, you know, because a lot of them don't, don't know how to not go into the classroom. They want to fix it real quick. Well, in the middle of teaching, you don't want somebody coming in, so we have to have them learn those kind of aspects. Again, customer service focused. And then we have industry certifications, too, which again, some of those, and we do some more. But we do encourage training, so that we can have more quality employees to take care of our teachers.
Yes. Are we having any recruiting issues on, on getting that capacity?
Oh, yes.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
But why, and even so, I still think that's great that you're focused on the personality, because you can't train the customer services as easy as you can the technical stuff.
Exactly. And what we've kind of been able to do successfully is, we have an internship program where we bring them in in the summer. And so we will take a high school kid that has just graduated, or, you know, somebody that's working in the Blinn Associates Degree Program, and they'll come in in the summer. And what we'll do is, we kind of, they do the grunt work. So they're up there blowing out computers. It's, it's dirty work. But if they keep their spirits up and, you know, always willing to come in, so those have usually been the employees that we've hired to come, become our campus-based technicians. And that has seemed to work very well for us.
That's brilliant.
Following up on that, I was curious if any of, if you know, if any of those, like qualifications and certifications are things that some of our CSISD students can get through our programs?
Yes, 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 they are. A lot of the CTE programs will get the A-plus and the net plus certifications. I think they're doing the Cisco, which is the CCNA and the CCMP ones. And the MSC is Microsoft certification. So I do know they are doing those on campuses. And we're going to try, I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I've got a couple of technicians that instead of sending them to a camp, or to a school to learn this, or having them get a book, a book open, they're going to try to proctor a class and sit in the back, again, with teacher's approval and everything else. But maybe that's some way we can have them, and then they can also give real-world experiences of what they see in the classroom, too. So we're trying to foster growth in them.
Right, yeah. And I was thinking the other way, obviously, that our students then could end up coming and have been working.
Exactly. And, and we have three of our existing staff now are former employees that have come up through those programs.
Former students.
Yes. Yeah, the former students, and it went through, you know, everybody knows Bart Taylor from Kinsol. We have a lot of Bart students, because he trained them on how to do that. And so it was easy to bring them in. They've already got the skill sets, and then we can let them go.
Fabulous.
So yes. So, but you talked about retention, recruiting, and that's what goes to retention. So I didn't put up our professional, which is the systems and the network people and everything else, salary schedule that remains for our technicians. This is our hardest one to fill. Our biggest competition is that school that Ms., I wish you'd, anyway, Texas A&amp;M is, we have a lot of people, we train them up and then they leave. And you can take the minimum, mid, and max points of those, and add about a dollar each hour. And that's essentially what we're competing against.
What's longevity? Are you talking like six months, a year? How long do you, are you able to keep people?
The shortest we've had is nine months. And that one hurt, because we put this one, that was really good. Most of them, we keep them for about a year and a half, and then they leave. We do have several employees on the technician side that have been here, you know, five, six years. And a lot of those, they've realized the quality of life they get, because if you go to A&amp;M, you know, you're working, we've got a two-hundred-and-forty-day range is what it is. They're working fifty-two weeks a year, you know. And so when they, when they put the pencil or paper, they actually figure out it's a better deal for us here. But a lot of them, when they see that initial twenty-nine-thousand dollars is your starting pay, and I can go get thirty-four thousand at Texas A&amp;M, they go, oh, well, I'm not going to do that, not realizing what all you get here. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And yeah, that's what hurt about the nine months, is that, but that nine-month one is because we put three months into them, so we only really had six months of productivity. And then they went to A&amp;M for another twelve thousand dollars a year. But that's the world we live in, unfortunately. Now, on the professional, and that's down on our performance matrix, as we'll get to, on a professional level, our network guys and our security guys and our, you know, we keep those longer, just because they do realize what they have here. And so we've been able to retain them. Most of those are eight, nine years or more. I think one, our oldest is, well, Jackie, and she's thirty-two years. But she's the exception. So thirteen, fourteen-year average on those. So, but this lists out our campus technicians, you know, one, two, and three. And like I said, sixteen dollars at A&amp;M is seventeen dollars an hour, you know. And that's, it is what it is, unfortunately. So on our budget trends, we average just a little over a million dollars for technology and computer services, which is the IT management side, our management and information system side. That it didn't increase, but we've been able to supplement that with instructional material funds. We do a lot of work with our educational foundation funds, and that is where we will see, we will get projects, grants that we put out, and we test things. And we were able to use those funds to do that. And, you know, the whole, all 3D printers and everything else that we have in place have come up from education foundation funds. And when they work, then we implement it as part of our normal standard, you know, campus funds. And that's where you see campus education and technology funds in there, too, because those are also there. And the big one is the two thousand, two thousand twenty-one bond. So that has helped us supplement, you know, our normal budget to get more devices, more network equipment, everything else. It's been a, it's, it's been a huge bonus for us. And just so I can remind everybody what all that includes in there. So thirteen thousand, thirteen million of that is for infrastructure. So when I said that, you know, in our long-range technology and our strategic plan, we needed more devices, we needed more infrastructure, well, Proposition A takes care of the infrastructure. That's more access points, that's more network switches, that's more servers, all of those backend things that nobody knows about and thinks about, but we have to have to make things work. And...
Are those answering the current capacity, or are we planning for the, the growth?
We're planning for growth. It's both. It's...
What kind of standoff does that give us? Are we talking like two years, or?
The, for infrastructure, we've been very lucky. Our switches and our servers have been able to get, you know, servers have been able to get about five years out of them. Switches, we've been able to get, you know, eight to ten years, based on what we've been implementing. Yeah, yeah, the turnover. Yeah, on student, on devices now, we do have a plan, I think it's further down, I haven't mentioned it. We, we have a five-year, you know, cycling out that we try to do on devices, so that they don't get too old. We would like to do it on a three-year plan, but that's just not physically, fiscally feasible to do. But that, that is technology-driven, and, you know, it's... Exactly, exactly. And, you know, those are the items that, you know, like bandwidth, you know, that's, we upgrade that pretty much every year. We've been able to increase speed and, you know, and internet access is a big one. Campus access, we're okay on, because we've implemented, you know, bigger, higher, higher-capacity circuits to allow us growth. And that's where we've been able to get eight to ten years out of those devices. And servers are just big computers, and unfortunately, they do go old a little bit faster. So, but yes, sir.
And I'll follow up, and you might be, this may become, are you going to talk about kind of what your bandwidth speed goals are at the campuses and how close we are, you know, how we, where we are with that? Is that kind of...
Yeah, the biggest, what we've, we've been able to do is the COS and Consortium of School Networks' recommendation for internet access, that's the biggest measurement we have for bandwidth. And they recommend a one gig per every thousand students. So we've got fourteen thousand students, so we need to have fourteen gigs. We're right now sitting at eight, but with, we rebid our internet access agreement out, and so we're going to bump that up to fifteen gig. So we will be actually a little bit more than what the recommended, recommended, you know, bandwidth should be. And the RFP we put out gives us the ability to go up to twenty gig, twenty gigs, so that'll give us, hopefully, enough cushion to cover it. And every time we bid it, knock on wood, the price has gone down.
Oh.
So, yeah, so the, the price of fifteen gigs is what we're paying for eight right now. So, so we've, we've been able to increase bandwidth without paying more.
We have been a little, I mean, we have been a little behind, though, so this is going to be a, can just been a positive. Good.
Yes, and we do, um...
And if you're getting to it, that's...
Yeah, it's further down in there. We, because I do want to show up, because anybody that has kids in the district that come up and tell you about why are things slow, there's a reason why. And we'll explain that here in a little bit. So... Yes, I know. I've got two at home, so, or one at home now, but yes, exactly. Anyway, so we're going to go through the responsibilities of each one of these groups we kind of talked about. So I will go into network services. So this is the Keith Brad Show. So internet access, remote access, remote access was not that big of an issue until last year. And we had to start having everybody go home and work from home, two years. Don't give me PTSD here. So we were able to turn on on demand. So that is a portion of the firewalls and stuff that we had in place already. So we were able to turn that on real quick, and able to just keep on going. Internet content filtering and firewall, that is very big. And what we have to do, we, we receive a lot of funds from E-Rate, which is a discount program. So, and the case of ours is based off our free and reduced lunch program. So internet access, we get fifty percent off, essentially. We apply for it every year. But part of that means that we have to make sure that we are content filtering the internet that's coming in and out. So no guns, no porn, no, you know, the bad stuff. So we have to do that. That falls in this group. It does somewhat touch our systems people, but mainly it's in network services. So wide area network group, and I'll go to a slide that comes up and shows you this a minute, that's the connections between all of the buildings and how they all interconnect together. Local area is what we're doing inside the building. So it, you know, stays inside the confines of the building. Wireless network, obviously, everybody knows what that does, and we have to have that in there. That's pretty much all inside the building. We do have some wireless that goes across the wide area network, but that's not relevant enough to discuss. Security cameras, AV systems, AV systems is probably one of the ones that nobody ever talks about, but causes us all kinds of grief. If you've ever been at a football game and the speaker starts crackling, there you go. We could call them that a whole lot, but every classroom and everything else has audio/video inside it as well. And so we have to deal with that. Public address system, the PAs, that is Brad's world. He has implemented a system that interconnects the entire district together. So if we wanted to send out an alert, God forbid something to happen, we had to lock down the entire district, Mr. Martindale could get in and trigger it, and it would lock down everything else. We can also, it concerns schedules, emergency operations. If we get a phone call and you see both Martindales and my phone, everybody else goes off, that means somebody on the campus has triggered a lockdown, a lock-in shelter, a place, whatever. So we're all notified of that. Brad is the one that takes care of all of that for us. And it's been very solid and very beneficial to have that capability. Telephones, we still have them. I don't think we'll ever get rid of them. We still have faxes, believe it or not, because of, most of our medical areas, doctors want to see faxes, and so we have all of that, and we have voicemail. But we're constantly improving on that in the network services realm. So when I talk about the wide area network and the local area network, so here's our wide area network. We are a redundant ring. Everything, as much as possible we can make redundant is redundant, which you'll see later on our performance metrics, is why we have fairly good numbers. I want to point out that this is in partnership with the city. So whenever something goes down, we have to contact the city, or vice versa. So there are fiber going around these telephone poles that y'all don't know about, you know, that weirdos like me know about, and I recognize and laugh. But that is how we were able to stay up. So it's in a partnership with the city. So if you see anybody from City College Station, let them know that we appreciate that partnership, because it has saved us a lot of money and time and effort, having that work together. But that gets our ten gigabits backbone. I will tell you, when you're going to hear ten gigabits, and you say, well, our internet access is fifteen gigabits, where's the bottleneck? It's not really a bottleneck, because the way the ring is designed, that half the traffic comes from one side, half the traffic comes from the other. So we can handle twenty gigs of traffic on our ring right now with no glitches. System administrator, these are the guys I talked about being in the cave. So these are our servers. We have physical and virtual servers, application management. So all of the Google that you see, all of the Microsoft stuff that you see, that is all managed back here from our guys in the cave, as like I refer to them as. So lots of file print services, lots of information being swapped around, is all being done on servers. So emails, calendar. So if your email is not working, you contact somebody, you're contacting the systems people to get it fixed. So lots of information and lots of things they do. It's just, it's too big to wrap around, is what all I do back there. Again, second screen, cloud services licensing, you know, antivirus, you name it, they handle it. So if it's running on a hard drive, they're touching it. So... Security services. So I have to, I'm going to explain this a little bit. It's a reason the slide is separate, is because this is what causes me to stay up at night, is cybersecurity and everything that's involved in it. We talked about the filter, the content filtering systems, but there's also a firewall in there. Think of it as, you know, if it doesn't, if we don't want it in, it doesn't come in. We keep it out. And that firewall is in there, it's a block. So if you ever see the schematic on the right-hand side, that kind of explains the flow of how everything works. So we come in with our internet gateway, we go into a switch that breaks off stuff that we have on the outside, so web servers and things like that. But then we go through the firewall. So we protect our internal network to make sure that the bad guys don't get in. So those are the issues in that content filter that calls me to stay up at night, is making sure those are updated and running and everything else. Which, thanks to the bond, we're going to upgrade to the latest and greatest and keep us going. I've got some numbers that'll scare you later on, too, but, you know, that way you can stay up at night, too, and worry about it as well as I do. Thank you, yes. But we utilize, you know, virtual private networks, we use virtual LANs. So we've got wires in there, but we virtually split the wires together, so that business services does not co-mingle with student services. And so what the kids are seeing on their computer will not ever intermingle with the other ones. So we try to break that up as logically as possible to keep us safe. We have shared drives, so that, you know, we can share stuff, but we also have features in there. Everybody hears about ransomware and how they, you know, lock things up and, you know, encrypt your files. We're very careful on who gets shared drives and who doesn't get shared drives. We update patches on our operating system and our latest and greatest, because most of the problems that we have from our... And our latest and greatest, because most of the problems that we have from a ransomware phishing standpoint is our people. So we've just entered into an agreement with a company. They've asked me to keep their name off the radar, but, um, I can tell you that off when the cameras aren't working. But we're doing behavioral training. So if you've received an email and you come up on our list of, oh, you clicked on the wrong email and now you're on the list that needs to be extra training, that's part of this group. And so we're trying to teach our teachers and our students how to be better, you know, at recognizing threats. Um, that includes, I don't know, most of y'all probably don't even know that you need to have three different emails. You need to have one specifically for work. You need to have one for your fun and then you need to have one that's kind of the in-between kind of work and fun, but you know, so that when something comes in on a work email that is obviously shouldn't be a work email, you know, it's a fake and you delete it. So these are things we're trying to teach our teachers how to do. And so we're trying to do some behavioral training. So.
Sorry, can I follow up on that training? Cause we, we all had to take some cyber training, right? And I thought there was something that we voted on that we kind of changed that now it's not required that everybody does the cyber. So how, I mean, I like that you're just, you're, you're focusing on who, who needs it. I mean, how, how much training do you think um, we'll end up getting to all of our staff and teachers on this? Cause then obviously it is important people and we all recognize, or at least you always hear in the news, it's not the, it's not the systems. Um, you can fix the system, it's, it's the people that are weakest.
And you're correct that the last TSB update did include some adjustments to policy. That was in response to legislative changes in the session that happened last year. Uh, it does reduce the requirement from a legislative statute standpoint, but it then moves that authority to the superintendent to determine locally the frequency of training with our, our staff. And so, um, I believe that you all are still required to participate annually. We'll double check that. Uh, so what we're doing right now is gathering some really good baseline data in terms of uh, the campaigns that are happening with our contracted services in terms of what percentage of our folks are actually clicking on these fake phishing emails so that we can get a better idea of what is a reasonable frequency for that training? And is it really that maybe we do it every two years? And if you uh, click the wrong thing, then perhaps you need a refresher? What specifically is that going to look like?
That sounds good. And I also, by the way, I think that having some of that data is meaningful to tell people, because I think a lot of people don't recognize it. Yes, we really, we're doing this for a reason because there are really people in our organization who, you know, who fall for them. They get better and better at the phishing stuff. So, yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, I will admit that I've had one employee show up on that list of clicking on the wrong email. And so we learned from it, you know, and again, it was just one of those things that you just never pay attention to it. And now they're more cognitive of what's coming through. Oh, you're welcome. So computer services or management information systems or whatever we want to call them, um, they're the ones that take care of all the student data and the financial data. They're the ones that affect the submittals to the state, which affects the budget. So, um, very important to the group, uh, but student information system that takes care of all of our schedules, our attendance, our transcripts. Anything related to that student record goes through the student information systems. That says Jackie and Casey. You'll hear Jackie and Casey mentioned kind of in tandem. Um, Jackie and Eric. So Eric is my financial information system guru. And so anything on the budget side, that goes through him. And so very important to the district, but that's what is included in the computer services group. And part of that is their data support for district departments as well, in addition to state and federal reporting. So all of these digital resources that we've put in place. Um, Casey and Eric and him have to generate reports and not, I guess not reports, rosters that then kick out so that these things can be populated, so that the teacher can have a class roster already may populated in the system and not manually doing it. So this group is the ones that go through and make all that happen, you know, through their magic wizardry of the computers. And then a little bit of our mandated reports that we do have to do, that they do, you know, so Texas school data system and early childhood system. So this is your PMS reports, um, civil rights reports, lots of mandated reports. Unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, depending on who you are, this is increasing on an annual basis. Every time alleged, I guess two years, every time a legislative session comes out, they come back with more reports. Um, they're now going to try to implement a nightly upload where they can just suck our data every night. Um, so I guess the amount of reports that we have to generate may go down, but they're going to be generated in the cells with our data. So that's going to be a fun project to take place. But, you know, Jackie, Casey and Eric are ready and up for the task to do this.
Has that issue been brought up through whatever systems like, hey, you're, you're asking us to report and it takes more hours than we have in the week to?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes. Um, the biggest impact that we think the state, and they've been notified of it, is there's a lot of submissions that we do and when you submit, you receive errors. And so you have to clean up the errors. And that usually takes three or four days to clean up the errors. Well, if we're doing this on a nightly basis, there's no time to ever clean up the errors. So the data's got to be cleaned before it goes in. That impacts a lot of stuff on our end to get stuff clean and ready to go before it gets sucked up. So the state, state is aware of it. Are they listening to us? I think they are.
Okay, good.
You know, but we'll see when the next legislative session comes in place, you know, how that works. So, okay. So feet on the street, these are campus-based technicians. What all do they do? Um, pretty much everything that you can think of inside that classroom, they touch. Um, we always joked if it plugs in, they kind of touch it. Well, these are the guys that are really touching it. So computers, iPads, projectors, smart boards, all of that stuff. I do want to point out teacher provided accessories because, you know, we will have teachers that it comes, especially after Christmas and they find this new whiz bang thing and they bring it in. And so our technicians do as much as they can to get it implemented without any kind of security risks or, you know, open of us to potential attacks. But they do handle all of this. So again, very customer service oriented guys, um, and girls. And like I said, they are the face of technology and every one of them, I've been told by several principals that I will not remove them from their campus because they're that much of a, and, and attached to them and a grow component of their campus.
Are these the guys that came and helped me out on Saturday?
Yes.
They were awesome.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Yes, that was Trey and Matt. So, yeah, they are very.
They were very helpful. It was an oversight by me. They came and saved me.
And example of Trey is one of those that he was the initial tech for College Station High School when Mr. Martindale was in charge over there. And with his skills and his customer service, we've promoted him up into the network group and he is can see, continues to shine. So, and just so you get a grasp of what all these guys are taking care of, um, rough numbers of inventory. And this comes back in the performance matrix later on, but we have eleven thousand computers in this district right now that they all touch and manage and maintain. In addition to that, all of these smart boards and projectors and you can see the numbers, it is daunting how many devices we have.
For the, for this, uh, teacher purchase devices, I apologize for my ignorance. Is that something they can submit and say, hey, we, we'd like this? And the, the administration says no, or is that something they can submit to the education foundation?
Well, when I, when I do teacher purchase, that, that's usually what I, they go on, they were at Best Buy and they saw something.
Okay.
And then they buy something like that.
So isn't that, it's not like, it's not a lack of funding or?
Right, yeah, yeah. It's, all education foundation grants, that comes through us, we verify that it works and then they receive the funds. And, and I will be honest with you, that is the fun things that you want to try out has been done with education foundation funds. So I am very appreciative of that because some of these things we wouldn't have been able to try and not take the risk with, but with this, we can take the risk. So, um, I'll also point out that there's three hundred and thirty printers. We have significantly cut that down since I've been here. Um, we always get asked the question, ironically, it's the coaches that ask the question, if can I get one in my office? And I have to tell them, can't you walk? You know? So the reason we do that, just so you know, if you, if so, you know, um, the reason we ask that is because we can get bigger devices that actually cost less to manage and maintain. And so, yes, they, there may be one in a group of six teachers that they have to share, but it does save money to the district. So it's part of our print management solution that we've got in place. And here's our replacement schedules. And so, Mr. Ben, do you recognize a device on the picture there for you? Oh, it's cool. Yeah. And so for all those that were in the Apple world, that's a nice Apple two E that we had in there that unfortunately I learned how to use too, that was cutting edge. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, so I'll put that in there so that, you know, some of us more seasoned people can recognize that. But our target on devices is five years on most of these devices, three years for our CTE computers, just because those are the higher-end workstations that really need to be the biggest and beefiest ones. We've been at a six-year term, thanks to the bond, that is going to get better now. We're going to get back to five and hopefully down to four if we can keep going that way. Um, but we are working on recycling, re- replacement cycle that is more in line with our target. Also want to point out that the, we utilize a trickle-down for all of our categories. So the teacher computers that are usually more more robust will roll down into student computers that are stuck in a classroom where they have one teacher and two student computers or into a pod environment or elementary schools. So we don't get them, get rid of them. We use them. They just don't have to have as much of the software on them. So they can actually get a little bit more life out of them. So we do use it, utilize that to get a little bit more bang out of our buck on that. So, and I will go over this pretty fast. Lots of servers, forty-seven physical servers, a hundred and seventy-seven virtual. So we don't have to have a box for every server now. We can virtualize it, which means software basically carves it up and makes it into multiple little boxes. Storage area network, we have five of those. Team game films, we have to have record all those, save all of those. We use them huddle, but we also have to store it here. We have lots of information that our teachers develop, classroom materials and stuff. We store that. A lot of kids' information we store. Um, we have nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-three users right now in the district and that all has to be managed and controlled. So all of the kids, when they graduate or they move up a year, we have to do that every summer. You know, we have to roll them over. And so there's a lot of teacher device, our teachers and students' accounts that have to be touched every year. Lots of switches, lots of UPSs. I get asked the question, my group asked the question, why do we have more switches and more UPSs? UPSs are our battery backup systems. So our target is an hour and a half runtime, so that if the power goes out, everything stays running for an hour and a half on a network side of it. Um, reason we have more UPSs is to get that runtime, we have to have multiple UPSs. So we have two UPSs per closet, therefore the numbers go up. Um, you can kind of see the bandwidth conversation. Uh, we have eight gigabits. Seventy percent of that is reserved for district devices. Thirty percent is reserved for our BYOD, which is the kits. And the reason we do that is we have to keep some kind of balance because we have to keep our district critical functions still working. Um, we didn't do that. One year we had a slip where the filter stopped doing what it was supposed to do. And BYD and everything was equal. And all of a sudden our child nutrition, people started complaining because they registers wouldn't work. They couldn't take, you know, the kids coming through the food line. And yes, so, so we have, there's a reason we regulate that, you know, and keep a little bit of control over it. So if the students are complaining, that is what's going on. And when they understand why we're doing it, do the kids understand? No, the teachers understand because we also, the teachers' devices, if they're personal, they're on the BYOD as well. But there is a reason that we throttle it back a little bit. So, um, PA systems we mentioned, security camera systems, there's nine hundred and forty-four cameras in this district. So, you know, and that's still not enough if you ask my principals. So we have lots of coverage on videos. And then other things we deal, again, I mentioned help desk because that's Brandy. And like I said, Brandy is a godsend for how we do things. Um, we do a lot of testing of new hardware and software and on our CTE and construction renovation stuff. So, yes, Mr. Decker.
Yeah, I kind of go back to what Darren was bringing up. When there's, when there's a gap, when something falls through, whether it be, like you said, the bulb or the, the network is out. Is there some kind of monitoring system that, that measures, I guess, the frequency that happens? And there's a feedback from a teacher, because y'all may just be, oh, we got it done in twenty-four hours, but that teacher is a important twenty-four hours. Is there any kind of?
Yeah, we, we do have, if, if we, we have a work order system. We have an issue with, and I, I'm encouraging it because, um, is if they put the work order in, yes, we can track all of that. We can see what the frequency of X and Y happened and, you know, how long did it take to resolve that issue? Um, about half of, what I've been told from our guys, about half of what actually gets submitted to them is they catch them in the hallway and say, hey, come here. So our high schools each have a dedicated technician. But the middle schools, you know, are splitting and then elementary schools, we're splitting three technician, or three campuses for one technician or four campuses in some places. And so a, a lot of them, since they're using their phones or, and I just contacted them directly, I don't have any data to put up there. So the work orders I do have in there, yes, we, we track all of that. Um, but I'll be honest with you, if it becomes an issue, I hear about it pretty quick. I don't know if you've noticed many of the teachers, I know your wife is a teacher, so they're not shy. They will, they will reach out to me real quick and say, this is not working, get it fixed, please. And, you know, politely, but I do do it real quick.
Sometimes politely.
Sometimes, sometimes. So, and, and your wife is at Greens Prairie, so Donna is no, is Welborn now, oh, okay. So Greens Prairie, Donna is not a, she picks up the phone and calls me real quick, so. So, yeah, so if the work order does track it, if they put it in the work order system.
Is it just to follow up on that, is it an easy enough work order system that your folks could put it in, that it might be worth it just to have the, the data? I mean, you don't want to have them wasting time on non-value added stuff, but just to.
We, we, we tried that last year, um, of having them go in, you know, after somebody catches you in the hallway, can you go back and put it in? And I'll be honest with you, the success rate was so low because again, they're, they're working all the work orders, they're, it's, they forget or whatever and, you know, a lot of times it's just a five-minute, you know, I'll fix the software driver and move on. And so they don't ever go do it. So we are moving to a new work order system, you know, we're implementing that, you know, we're testing it right now at Welborn. But we will have that rolled out district-wide this summer. And it does have a lot of extra features into it that maybe will help with those things, make it where the technician can put it in faster. Um, it does have a lot of knowledge-based tools that we can put in there too. So a lot of it, we can put in, I'm just going to use facilities because the thermostat's right behind your head there, I can say. Um, when they ask that it's too hot in a room, it will put up a picture of it and say, well, the thermostat, if it's between here and here, that's the district setting, so don't put in a ticket for that, you know. So we're doing things like that as well. But that'll be next year, you know, hopefully it'll be smooth and works out. Okay. So system integrity, and again, hopefully I'm not talking too fast for y'all. So we're, we're committed to fair and open practices. So we want to make sure everything we do is above and transparent and aboard. And, you know, if I, I want people to realize what we're doing and it, there should be nothing hidden. Um, everybody in our department, I, I hold to a high standard of ethics. Just because of the data that we have to touch and we have to control, so we have to have high ethics. Um, like I said, we have lots of personal identified information that we touch and we don't want that to be get out. And so we make sure they're all very, very rigorous in what they do. Um, and again, and transparent. So we want to make sure that whatever we do, there's a reason why we're doing it and they understand why we're doing it as well. So from a purchasing standpoint, you know, again, we use, me and Ms. Schaefer over in purchasing is, are, we're very tight. Um, we do everything to make sure that I won't be seen in the Eagle or KB Tex and she won't be seen in the Eagle or KB Tex. So we use a lot of contracts and local contracts that have already been bidded and awarded and approved by the state. So you'll see DIR contracts, you'll see tips, taps, buy board. Those kind of things will come in. When we have to do bigger projects, you will see us doing a request for bid or a request for proposal. Just recently, we did the smart panel and that was a request for bid we put out there. We could have done it off of DIR contract. But we wanted to make sure because of the size, because it was three million, we want to make sure it was up and everybody had adequate chances to, you know, do it the right way. Um, sole source contracts we put out there, we, we do use some of those. We don't like to use them a whole lot because they've gone through the purchasing requirements and everything else, so they're official. But it doesn't get that competition that we sometimes like to have. But like Power School, which is our E-school, our E-financial, that's our student information system, financial information systems, all of those things are highly integrated and tied in together. We use a sole source for that because that would be a years, one or two years process to convert that over to something else. And so those are the cases. Destiny, again, we've had that for our library software for years. It is tightly integrated and everything else. So we, we kind of keep those as sole source contracts. But that is very few and far between. And every time I bring up something that we might have to use a sole source, Ms. Schaefer is very adamant that we need to try and see if we can find something else to make sure we're, you know, making sure we're bidding apples to apples and not just going with an apple. Some of the vendors that we use, you'll hear a lot of Aruba. If you look up our access points, they're all Aruba, which used to be HP and now Aruba's bottom. And so that's our network side of the house. Apple we use, we use a lot of HP computers. Most of our computers are HP. We do have some Dells in there. Um, we do have some Lenovo's, but HP is the majority of it. We are a Microsoft shop, so we have a lot of Microsoft products out there. Power School, which Schoology is actually now a Power School entity as well. So that should actually be rolled up underneath there. Um, Smart Technologies is our smart boards, our displays that we just did. And WireStar is our internet provider. Um, we were internet using WireStar and Southern Link, but thanks to the last bid we did, we were able to get our redundancy that we needed all from one vendor, um, with redundant paths. So, and that also got our prices to go down. So we were very happy of that as well. Risk and exposures, what keeps me up at night, cybersecurity. Um, I think I've mentioned that earlier multiple times. So we have a lot of student information of soc- social security numbers, date of birth, all of that stuff is in our hands. And we have to make sure we protect all of that because the last I heard is like three dollars of clean ID record is what the going rate is on the black market. And I have fourteen thousand of them that are primed for the picking. And so that scares me a lot. So we try to protect that as much as possible. Payment card information, credit cards. Um, if you've noticed, we use N-Touch now instead of having anything done, because we don't want that kind of scrutiny. because we don't want that kind of scrutiny on our network because, I mean, not scrutiny on our network. We don't want that kind of requirements on our network to make sure we are P C I compliant because it is intense that you have to do. And so whenever we can, we outsource that and have the, another company do that. And we have the physical and virtual breaches. So we're worried about what comes in from the outside, but we also have fourteen thousand students plus, you know, fifteen hundred teachers walking around with computers that all touching our network. So we have to find a balance of what's, you know, what's an adequate amount of risk that we don't impede in the learning that has to go on in this district. But, you know, i- i- it's, it's a balance that we have to. So, and we also have to meet all of our F C C, T E A and federal requirements. So CIPA compliance means that we have to have a comply, uh, the filter in place. We have to have all of our FERPA rules and HIPAA rules. So we touch a lot of mandated federal requirements that we have to do in addition to state of Texas requirements, so. This is the one that scares me. So sixty two school districts and twenty one were hit. January fourth, three thousand, we had three thousand schools and that number is probably exponentially more now as well. So I am terrified of ransomware attacks. So we've taken a lot of steps to protect us from that. And the first one is end user awareness and behavior. So we've got the systems in place to protect it. But if the end user clicks on that attachment that comes through on the email, they just bypassed everything. Most of them come through emails. So you'll get an email and they'll, they'll have a link to something that downloads a little file that malware that puts on your machine or it'll have a PDF or something like that in there and that's all they need. And once they get in, then it starts spreading. So that's what we're trying to teach our teachers and faculty and staff how to be more cognitive of what, when they click on something, make sure they click on the right thing.
Does, I see the word insurance in there is where this article came from. Do we, does our insurance cover?
Yes, it do. Yes.
Not that that's.
Yeah, hopefully.
We don't ever want to use it, but yeah.
Again, hopefully keep my name out of the paper.
I think it's important to remember that this is not just about a breach of information, but it's also about the potential for the systems district wide shutting down for a lengthy period of time. One of the districts in Texas that was hit this last year was down for several months. So no access to financial systems, student information systems, phone systems. So i- it is very, very concerning and, and I completely understand why it keeps David up at night. It keeps me up at night as well. Which is why we have engaged with this third party vendor to help us improve beyond just the hardening of, of our entry points to the human behavior aspect, uh, because that is really where we are most at risk. Uh, it's not just about clicking on funny emails. It's about these folks getting very, very sophisticated and being able to spoof other people. So it looks like Mike has sent a, a request from the superintendent's office to someone. And then the next thing you know, they have fallen for it because it, it looks very legitimate.
That's right. So if he asks for gift cards. Never give him a gift card, just, yeah. Y'all got that? Yeah, I got that, yes. Yeah. So the, the, the one thing that come out is if you ever have a, an email come like that, just call them and say, Mike, are you really? And that knocks down like eighty five percent of what the threats are. So, but we do other things. You know, Molly mentioned that we are worried about people getting in and locking up our systems. So we do all, an extensive amount of data backups offsite, you know, we've got a lot of, in our data breach response plan. We've got a lot of things that we do to kind of mitigate that. It's not when it happens, it's gonna happen. We just want to make sure it's a small scale attack.
I know, I mean, you mentioned that, you know, that our internal systems are split off. I mean, like I said, the students don't have access to much. But how much of this risk do you feel like it may come from our internal students? And if we, we, haven't we had some issues before with?
Yes, and, and that's, 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 that's the balancing act of, you know, how much do we give access and, and control access versus impacting their educational, you know, requirements that they have to have. So yeah, when, when I, when I talk in the corporate world, because I, I came from the corporate world, you know, eight years ago, nine years ago. And it was a very easy for my counterparts that did the commercial side, I handled education. But they said, well, we just lock them out, you know. Well, I said, well, you can't do that. I handled Texas A and M. And I said, we've got forty five thousand people that I just can't lock out. And, you know, we've got fourteen thousand people. So yeah, the threat is from inside and outside. And most of the kids that are, that we've caught in the past, they were fooling around. They, they were bored and wanted to try something, just to see or, you know, and that's, it wasn't mischievous, it just was, you know. I guess wasn't malicious, it was mischievous, yes.
With those rants, and, and not to get too far detailed about the ransomware attacks, but is a lot of that due to a lot of the on premise architecture that we may, as we shift to cloud, will that mitigate a lot of the ransomware?
It will mitigate some, but again, it's I, I, we're, we're doing a hybrid approach.
Okay.
Because what we have is we do have a lot of our backups in cloud and, but if, if it propagates through, if, if that file gets corrupted in the cloud, it will eventually propagate through all of their crowds, because the cloud system is nothing more than servers just in a data center somewhere else.
We're not solely relying on.
So we're not, yeah, because, you know, again, you know, I'm a belt and suspenders kind of guy. So we have it in the cloud, but we also have it, you know, stored in a, one of the sands over at College Station High School. So if this one gets attacked, that one is separated from it and, you know, we have about a twenty four hour period of being able to recognize something's a lot wrong here. So we can restore from here that one. So we've got multiple ways of backing up. So yeah, the cloud is good, but it's not the savior that, or at least I don't think is a savior that everybody puts it out to be. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. So getting into performance metrics and so what do we do to measure ourselves? So we've sat down as a, a good group and, you know, these have been in place for a while. And we've tried to figure out, you know, what's a good way to see if we're really doing what we need to do. And so what you're gonna see is based on the evaluation metrics that we've developed internally and with some other C and I and people like that in the past have put their inputs into it. Also the performance targets that we've implemented. But if you see any of these, please voice concerns and say, hey, I think you need to be measuring this or whatever, because we do value opinions of the board members. And then every year we, we throw out there, you know, where we've hit these numbers so that you can look at them and see if we're doing what we really do. So what we've fallen into is four categories, productivity, quality, timeliness and customer satisfaction. I would tell you, customer satisfaction is probably the biggest one right now for me, because if I've got happy teachers and happy students, then, you know, a lot of those other things just fall into place. Because if I don't get a response back fast, you know, my customer satisfaction is down, so timeliness is also going to be impacted. So here's my work orders. So as you can see, forty five hundred, you know, average work orders that we have. I will tell you, that's half of what it really is. Because a lot of them, just when they catch them in the hall and they say it, and I've been there and they've called, hey, can you real quick, you know, take care of this? But we, we said, you know, we want to, you know, target of ninety six percent completion and, you know, satisfactory completed rate. And so that number, we're, we're running above, we're running at ninety eight point five. We had a little dip last year, but that was crazy year. So I'm not too worried about that year and we're back up to where we need to be. But again, you know, we're getting them completed, we're getting them resolved satisfactorily, everybody's happy about them. Because we have a customer satisfaction rating later on as well. Responses, this is what you were talking about earlier about time. So, you know, I want them to acknowledge that there's something out there. Again, we're a little bit over our target of thirty minutes. But if a work order is in the system, I want them to say, yes, I get it and respond back to the teacher, faculty, staff, whoever it may be, and saying, yes, I'm on it. And then they can kind of say, well, I'll be down there or we can schedule a time or whatever. But for our standard work orders, this is the one where the computer may be doing something funny in the classroom or whatever, we do three days. And you can see that we are setting, you know, right about the two day, two days and thirteen hours, one hour. Again, that's what's being recorded in the work order system. I will tell you, I've been there. If something's going wrong fast, the teacher runs down the hall and catches them and says, come fix this now. And usually they do it, so. If someone's there, that is an issue, if someone's there.
Their way to teacher to say, no, I can't get my lesson if the projector's not working and like to help with the text to triage things?
There, there is a way, they can, they can rank it if it's emergency or not. And so that you can, you can put the priority level, high, medium or low on there. And so, you know, I will say, we, we don't have very many cry wolves, you know, they don't mark it high. They really are very cognitive of what, you know, what needs to be done. Cognizant of what needs to be done and how critical it is in there. Because I, I will tell you, we have lots of, you know, again, this is, I've worked at a couple of districts, but this is the one district that, you know, our teachers know how to adapt really well. So if something's not working, they can move on. And so, you know, we don't like to have them do that, but they do adapt. So they can handle two days, that's okay, you know. Now, if the whole campus goes down or if it's entire district goes down, that's a different story. You know, we do the triage and we're, we're all over it. But this is our normal standard work order response. So I throw this one out here. Little bit to scare you, but also to say how good the technicians are. So seven hundred and fifty is the target divi- number of devices per technician that Tasby recommends. As you can see, i- i- in my life here, I've never seen that number, you know, nine hundred if I was what we, is the closest we've got. And that's computers, that's smart boards, projectors, iPads, things like that. So total amount on that campus that a technician is assigned to should be seven hundred and fifty. Right now, we're at eight hundred, eighteen hundred devices. That will increase with the ones that we're purchasing via the bond. We are buying tools to allow them to do a lot more remote management, to speed things up and, you know, not have to physically go to that campus because we don't have enough people to be on every campus. But I want to tell you, you know, given our customer satisfaction and the response time and everything else, that's pretty impressive that the technicians are able to handle that workload. Now, am I worried they're gonna get burned out? Yes, but we're trying to give more tools to help with that. Well, wh- what we've been told is the private sector is two hundred devices per technician. Again, I, you know, I was on the corporate world, but I supported education. So that's, everything I've had has always been dealt with, education. So yeah, it's, you know. But in the corporate world, I guess you're dealing with, you know, if something's down, they're losing dollars, you know. Now, to me, if something's down, we're losing educational time, which is more important to dollars, which is why I'm where I'm at, but yeah. Potato, potato. Anyway, but I want to show that, yeah, our, our technicians are very, very, very efficient and very skilled in what they do with what they're able to support. So, but the bond will actually also help too because they'll have new devices and new devices require less work. It's kind of like your car. Older cars require more work. Yes, yeah, we just do that and unplug and replug and you're good. So.
Just curious on that, how, do you, how much of the issues they're dealing with are hardware issues or how much are software issues? Are they almost, are these guys always the hard?
It's about seventy percent of it is probably software. And now, but it, it's gonna get, it'd be more software as the devices get, you know, refreshed and replenished because the hardware won't fail. We have very few, you know, hard drives fail or, you know, displays stop working or whatever. I will tell you, of that hardware failure issues, a lot of it may be the kid kicked the power cord when the teacher wasn't looking.
Check the power cord.
You know, that kind of things too. And so they do go in, which the new work order system will allow us to have that knowledge base in there. And the first thing it'll say is, did you check the power? Did you do this? Did you do that? You know. And power's not a good example because they have to go to another class to put the work order in or have to do it via the phone. But, you know, it will give them little hints to kind of speed things up and make their time for resolution. And I will tell you, a lot of teachers, there's, we have the C T Fs, but we also have one teacher usually in a wing, like a first grade wing that's more technically savvy and they'll just go over and say, hey, Mrs. Smith, can you help me real quick? That also resolves a lot of issues too, but yeah, probably seventy thirty under breakdown. So. And here's uptime. I know this is critical. I, we laugh because we do have alerts to let us know if the internet goes down or if a switch goes down or something like that, you know. I really don't need it because this thing goes off at same time. So, you know, my fun comment, last time we had the internet access issue the other day was Ms. Hickman hit me up before. She goes, hey, I'm sure you know this, but are we having issues with the internet? I was like, yeah, you're just one of many that had hit me up. But this chart right here shows us how many, um, what the statistics are that show is how many uptime. We, we try to get at least ninety eight percent up. I will tell you, the internet go, went down for six hours. Three months ago, two months ago. Anyway, and just so you know, we, we have a network filter. We've built redundancy and then everything else. And our filter, there's an in card and an out card. Well, we didn't have multiple ins and outs. We thought we had two cards. We found out it didn't work that way. And so that card went down, so we had to do some magic work to make it work. So that was six hours and so that took us down to ninety nine point eight eight eight. And so there's not a lot of downtime to really hurt your numbers here. And we still were above ninety eight percent, so I, I feel pretty good about what we've been able to do with the redundancy that we've built into the system. And so when we do this network upgrades with the bond funds, that will just make sure we keep the status quo going. I'm very happy about the wider network because that's our joint partnership with the city, so I don't have a lot of control over the city side of it, but we kept a hundred percent uptime, you know. The only hiccup was last year and that was a squirrel chewed through, I think in Southwood Valley, which took a little time to get fixed. And it took down both sides of the ring. So anyway. But, um, as you see, you know, we, we try to make sure everything's working because again, I don't want the kids to think when they leave that the internet didn't work, you know, that it just all worked and magically happened and they can remember how wonderful Ms. Kellen was and not that, oh, Mr. Hutcherson ruined my life because the internet didn't work. So, you know, so, so this is one of the quality measures we do. Going back to our previous discussion about technicians and turnover. If you look at our target of ten percent retention, I do, you know, that to me is high, but you know, that's what we can live with. All staff, that includes everybody in the department, but technicians are the ones that I deal with replacing a lot. And as you can ironically see, two thousand nineteen and twenty, we didn't lose anybody. Well, that was going into COVID and everybody was like, well, I'm gonna, gotta sit still here and not change things. But we usually run, you know, ten, eleven and, and unfortunately thirty percent last year. And that was one of them was, we had him for nine months and he left and the two other ones went to A and M. But that's my hardest issue to deal with is keeping my technicians here. But like I said, the other technician, the other staff, the professionals, I, I don't have a big issue with them, you know, they're I think I'm, there's two younger than me. Everybody else has been here longer. So, and we do, it's, we try to, it gets a, it's a work order survey. So the people that do fill it out, we're running at a ninety three percent actual, you know, responses of being satisfied with what the service they've received. That's kind of like the cable TV. Everybody hates you, so I'm really proud that that number is where it's at. Because usually when you've had a work order in, you've got an issue. And so I've been very happy that ninety three percent is where we're standing right now. So. Challenges, increased need for devices, which was met with the bond. So I'm very happy that we have bond funds that we can apply to devices. We've already purchased two thousand. We're about to purchase another one. It's gonna come to y'all in the next board agenda to finish out our student devices. We are working on laptops for our teachers and rolling those things out. Again, those are later to come into May, June, so high school and middle schools will have devices to do and then we'll do the elementary schools and intermediates, you know, October, November. Wireless growth, we just received word from E Rate yesterday that they have approved our discount request for internet access points. So we can start rolling on those two in July and providing more bandwidth, more internet connection points for our guys. Privacy and security, we mentioned that it's the nature of the business, you know, we've got kids that we have to deal with getting in and out and, you know, plus the outside world trying to get in, that's just what we have to deal with. But I will tell you, that is what keeps me up at night. And now I'm glad to know that it keeps you up at night as well. Yes. So, and evolution of instructional technology and digital resources. So we've done a lot of work with C and I to make sure we standardize on our digital resources because four or five years ago, Dr. Trammell can attest to this. We had lots of campuses doing lots of different things, all good things, but there was no consistency. And so Dr. Trammell's been very adamant about trying to make this consistent across the entire district of every elementary school is using the same stuff. Every middle school is using the same stuff, intermediate. And so that's been an issue of getting all that cleaned up. But we're, we are addressing the challenge and I think we're, we've been very good at getting that cleaned up as well. Campus facilities, new buildings, not that big of a deal. Old buildings, South Knoll, trying to design and implement, you know, air conditioning and power requirements for all these switches and UPSs and things we put in into a building that was designed when they had no idea what this stuff was is always a concern. So me and Mr. John Hall work a whole lot together to get these done, but that's always an issue. Security access into these closets as well is another issue. Southwood Valley, for example, we have, our data closets are shared with the teachers. And so that means people are going in and out and getting materials and stuff, which is fine. But I have to lock the cabinets now so little fingers and hands don't go in there and start playing with stuff. But that's just, we can't all have new buildings and we understand that. Employee recruitment and retention, again, we, we've addressed that multiple times and that's been an issue for our technicians. And cost increases, Ms. Draws and I have been in several conversations because not only computers going up, switches are. because not only computers going up, switches are going up because of supply chain issues. I don't know if the supply, the software companies have decided to do the same thing, but they're all raising their prices five, six percent every year as well, just because I think they can. I don't, there's no reason for it. So as we move to digital resources, we have to buy software services, which now costs us more. So those are our challenges, and I believe that leads me to this, and I have no recommendations for policy changes. And that concludes it. Did I talk too fast? Too fast? So, anyway, so does anybody have any questions we wanna delve into?
I have one kind of thing I wanted to understand a little better is, you know, we have obviously added a lot of devices over the last two years, you know, with the federal funds and now with our bond funds. And what is our plan? And this is maybe for you too, Mike, our four um, or, or our goal for, for devices for students? You know, that one-to-one question that always comes up. I mean, are we trying to get there? What, what, what is our, what is our plan?
I'll talk with you, you can fill me in or what. So what we're, what we're implementing, and again, it goes back to education, you know, foundation grant. We've received some funds for that, we're using bond funds. But Dr. Trammell and CNI, they have an education cohort group that they're trying to do. So we're going to implement not one-to-one device per kid, but one device in a classroom. So every kid that walks into that classroom will have a device that they can use for them dedicated in that class period. So we're gonna kind of see how that works and try to see if we can actually get some qualitative and quantitative assessments of, did it really improve the child's, you know, learning? And once we get a better understanding of that, I think then we can say, well, we want to go with the direction of the district is, are we gonna be, you know, one-to-one as a district level, one-to-one per kid? How do we want to do that? But we, we just need more data, so, yes.
And just to extend on that, you know, that is kind of an opportunity to experiment and see with those teachers who are having high interest of really integrating technology into their classroom. It was a, an application process, a selection process, and so there's gonna be training and support in addition to the devices for that group of teachers from across the district. From a much broader standpoint though, where we will be once the devices with bond funds have been purchased is that all campuses will have almost a two-to-one ratio, meaning two devices per one student at each campus, which is a significant improvement over where we are a few years ago when we were more around the four-to-one.
Another way around.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. We're buying way too many.
Yes, thank you, sorry about that.
We have extras?
No.
I know he likes to be redundant.
One device per two students will be where we land with, with functional devices across our campuses. Because part of this process is going to be pulling that inventory that is no longer functional. You know, it's, it's great to have an iPad, but if all you can do is surf the internet, then instructionally, that really does not provide advantage or opportunity for our students. And so we're gonna be pulling those devices that are no longer functional at the level to which we need. And ultimately, like I said, where we'll get is that one device per two students. And then, you know, in the next few years, we'll be really evaluating whether those ratios are sufficient to meet our needs instructionally or if we need to do more in addition to the replacement cycles.
This is, go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, this is the what Stephanie Ryan talked about at um Grant Showcase on Thursday during the lunch, correct? Okay, and that was the grant through Education Foundation. Okay, yeah, they are, this, that sounds really cool what they're, what they're trying to do.
Incubator program.
Yes, yes.
I was gonna ask to share a little bit more about that. I mean, is this elementary students, is it across the district?
It was open across the district. Um, we'd probably need to gather some more information from Stephanie to be able to talk details because the instructional technology aspect is, is really within the CNI department, and she's heading that up. And she has the whole presentation that she, that she gave on Thursday, so she has it all, I mean, all the information.
We can definitely get you with that information.
That would be great, that would be great.
So, so my question is probably more of an administration and, and board question than, because I know, you know, your department is, has to be as effective and cost efficient and so forth as possible. But one of the things, you were talking about the seventy-thirty ratio between district usage and, and, and personal, you know, bring your own device type deal, is, I don't know if it was last year or when it was, when I think it was Shack maybe that gave their report. And one of the, the big concerns was the mental health aspect of kids having unlimited bandwidth and so forth, and usage of their, their, their personal devices at least, and probably school devices too. Is there, has there been any discussion or is that something we should be concerned about as far as potentially limiting uh personal use of technology to, to kind of cut back on those potential mental health issues that come from?
So our existing student handbooks do have graduated levels of access with elementary versus intermediate versus middle. So there are restrictions around the time of day and, you know, the frequency that students can use their personal devices, especially at the lower grades. I don't know that we've had any extended conversation about that at the high school level or perhaps even middle school level because, you know, students are allowed to use those devices during lunch and, you know, free periods.
I, I have the same question because we've seen it with, with transition or remote work. And both, both the students' mental health, uh, the parents' mental health and the teachers' uh, mental health, is, is there, does the handbook, the teacher's handbook cover that, you know, it won't be contacted, won't use things? So that way they can actually focus on their life and their ability to plan for the next day? Is there some kind of filter so there's not a constant, with all these apps and, and the Schoology and stuff, that there's not a constant communication and feedback loop?
I want to make sure I understand, on a teacher's personal device?
No, I mean, just between a teacher, a student and the parent, is, you said the students have graduated access. But are there any controls to prevent that a teacher can actually, when they're done with their day, that they're done?
We, we do, we do not have those things articulated in a formal document.
Okay.
I think what has occurred, sure.
Okay.
Sure, I, I, I can tell you that my wife will get messages through Schoology all times. Of course, it's much improved this year. It was more probably the last year and a half when we were um working our way through COVID and those types of things. So there's nothing from the district standpoint that's articulated. And what I have seen or I know she has done is kind of just with her classes articulate, after X P M, you know, I'll respond the next morning starting at this time. So there's nothing been formal from the district standpoint. I think that has occurred more on an individual professional basis as to uh when you respond to Schoology messages, because nothing's going to prevent people from when they send them. I think you kind of have to establish the parameters from a personal standpoint as to starting at nine o'clock, I'm not doing any email any longer until seven the next day. So there's nothing been standard uh, uh, from the district standpoint. Maybe something we look at in the future, but I'd wanna get feedback from the campuses as to what that might be and what those times would consist of if there's a particular desire.
Because there is, there, there has been a, coming from other institutions I've worked in, there's a lot of research on the anxiety increases because you don't have, forces you not to have to plan because you've always got the ability to reach out to somebody. And that trickles down into that you can always, oh, by the way, something. But then the reverse side of that, people are always on edge waiting for that, oh, by the way. So I, I would recommend, I don't know if it's recommendation or something for further discussion, that we, we have a, like a business practices where teachers won't contact. Or, and, and, I mean, anecdotally, like when in college, I would miss an assignment because like, oh, we put it on the, on the school, uh, whatever, using Blackboard. Well, yeah, but I, I only checked it at seven, you put it on at nine. Versus a teacher like can never be able to unplug if they're constantly, and, and I feel if we, assuming we have the best teachers and they want to respond when a parent has it, but understanding a parent may not get to till nine thirty, ten at night. I think just having those expectations set and some kind of formal document helps everybody in that way. They're, they're worried about, okay, I can deal with this tomorrow.
Well, I think the other side of that, I mean, I, 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 I'm not saying we, personally, I don't know if we should limit what, when a teacher can um respond because they might be that person who likes to, you know, get up at five AM and do it. But I, I certainly get your point. But I would say the other side of it too is we're, we're, the bad side of it, we're training our students to be able to wait till the last minute and read, you know, and ask for things and expect to get a, a response at nine or, you know, ten PM, right? I think that's the.
I think.
As he leaves.
That's what you previously said.
I think it's, I mean, I see what Blaine's trying to say, but maybe it's more of a recommendation than anything at this point because I don't think, I mean, we're all in some type of business. I mean, I'm answering emails at eleven, twelve at night sometimes. It's just the nature of the beast that we live in, in the Amazon world we live in, get it ordered today and get it tomorrow kind of deal. Yes, I, I mean, I agree, you know, set the expectation, and you can always do that. And so maybe if we just put it as a recommendation or something like that, um, so that we can show, hey, you know, hey, teachers, we're not expecting you to work twenty-four, seven. I mean, that's never been the gig at, at all. But then some people are just like that, they get up at, you know, five o'clock and they get their day started, and it's just easier for them to do that and then go into the classroom at seven thirty in the morning and get the day started. So maybe it's more of just a.
We, we'll take note, and as we review our student handbooks, um, we'll, we'll take a look at, and, and we'll get feedback from campuses as well. And I wanted to touch on what um Josh was um mentioning as well. There's, there's a balance between restricting the use of those devices when and so on and so forth because unfortunately, that can translate into uh time spent addressing students or using their devices as an appropriate time or not. So you have to be careful of the parameters you set on that, which I believe there should be. And we do kind of have a, a, a tiered effect moving up in the grade levels. But um it's, it, we have to be careful that we don't unintentionally generate principal spending more, even more time on disciplinary type matters associated with it. So I think there's a balance in that as well.
That makes complete sense, but I, is it something we've looked at recently? I don't, when, when this tiered system was kind of developed or what's that?
Yeah, I think we adjusted in middle school a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Three or four years ago, okay.
Well, and another point on that, it does go back to the um devices available for students to use. I mean, this is one of the arguments that um Brian used for their devices that they gave out to students is because when you, when they, each student has a device supplied by the school district, then they do not have to, or they can't have their personal device out, right? You really can control their access to the internet all day long. I mean, it's a, it's a real other benefit that most people don't think about, about having the one-to-one devices available, you know, maybe for some of those critical years where we are not really, you know, we want to limit what they're looking at on their own phones. I also think it's a, a, I mean, I have mixed, I, I do not know what the answer is to the one-to-one device question. But I mean, I do know that there are some, some, um, or it's, it's a complicated discussion, right? About the pros and cons of it, besides the money part of it. But I mean, that's an added benefit. Plus the, it's just, it really bec- it's, it's an equality across the board. We're asking our own students to use their devices a lot in the classroom. Right, we really, we really are to access things, you know, whether it's Schoology or check something, do a quiz and, you know, do a quiz. You know, and I, I think it's, it becomes a, um, I mean, it is an equality thing. And that's, that's, that could be the difference in quality between, you know, my kid has a, and, you know, an iPhone thirteen and your kid has a, you know, a Galaxy something, and, and maybe it's just that, that we're, we're not on a level play, playing, playing field. So anyway, there's, there's lots of.
Can I ask a good question?
I, I, no, but I, but I, but I think it's.
Can I ask a question? You touched on, you've got uh technicians on eight of nineteen campuses, and I'm thrilled the bond passed, obviously, for connectivity and all that good stuff that's needed, so thank you to our voters. Is there a long-term plan to get a techni-? You mentioned how many of them, let's grab them in the hallway. Well, that's only if they're there, if they have a technician. Is there a long-term plan, or if we could, I guess, wave a magic wand, would we have a technician on every campus, especially considering you mentioned how many devices we have?
Ideally, you, you know, yeah, so one technician per campus would be wonderful. Would it be the best resources? I, I, I don't think so, given that the, there's a reason we have one technician on the high school is because, you know, you've got, was it two thousand students on a campus right now? Whereas in elementary school, we only have, you know, six, seven hundred students. So what I would, what my vision would be is I'd have one technician taking care of two elementary schools in close proximity, so they could be there fast if it needed to be, they wouldn't be on the campus all the time. And then we could also take those funds and then we could, and supplement it with an extra, a full-time curric- uh, CTF, campus technician facilitator or something like that could, you know, my technician could handle the technical issues. But we also need a need for having them integrate the technology into it. So I, you know, if, if I were spending dollars, I know I'm not advocating for my department, but that's what I would probably do is a couple of extra technicians to get, you know, to that two-to-one campus ratio, and then extra instructional technology people so that we can actually integrate that resources better. Because right now.
But they're closing ninety, ninety-nine point nine percent of their, their tickets within three days, and they've got five times the.
Yeah, but I fully understand that's great to see, but when it goes down in the middle class.
So Dr. Payne, just, I, I think we could always use more staff.
Sure.
We're all familiar with our, our budget situation. So I, I think that we have a, we have a process each spring where directors such as David and folks over departments and those types of things submit new personnel requests that would be adds to the budget. From there, the district, the cabinet looks at uh capacity or no capacity in the budget and makes decisions as best as possible based on need relative to what uh capacity is available. So um there, there, while we're speaking technology today, there are needs uh throughout and in different departments that are similar or relative to kind of what David is saying here. So we, we just have to make the decisions based on our financial resources to, to rank order what we can address and what we can't. And if I have to choose a special ed teacher over a technician, I'm picking a special ed teacher. So we unfortunately, we're in a, a, a world, and I think all of our other thousand school districts in the state of Texas as well are in that place where you have to prioritize and you do what you can with.
Yeah, and I don't mean advocating, that's why I was more curious to see what, what would make sense. But uh just want to make sure that our teachers obviously have those resources as we move to, everybody's got more and more technology in the classroom. However, hopefully it's simpler to use and everything behind the scenes is operating.
And I think, I think that's the argument for them using, using the work order system because then when it falls through, we've got a record of that, and then we can make those judicial decisions based on actual data, not on immediacy of the moment.
Exactly. And I, I will tell you that I've, you know, IT directors, we talk a lot amongst ourselves, and our ratios are pretty much in line with what other districts are because unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast. Yes, yeah.
And I, I mean, I love your questionnaire, and your answer though, so you're saying, you, you actually think the folks that may be more needed though, David, are, are, are you saying like they're the, the, the teacher facilitator folks? So I mean, maybe an extra or?
I just.
When you say the CI.
Yes, I know, I'm shooting myself in the foot by saying this, but um we're putting a lot of money into devices and stuff. But if that device is not used properly, it's wasted money. And so, you know, in, in conjunction with an extra couple of technicians, I do think we need to put more resources in how to train the teachers, how to implement it better. And I will tell you, some of the CTFs we have, and they're doing it in their off periods, but you know, if we could have them do maybe half a day worth of work, they could do more training with how to integrate technology in the lesson plans, I think, I guess. So, yeah, I think there's a benefit to there. But they also help me out because if there's an issue going on, a lot of times they can go in real quick and diagnose something and fix it, you know, without doing a full-blown ticket into the work order system or finding a technician. Because a lot of times it's, it's something as simple as the, the cable got unplugged, or they just need to upload a driver or something, you know, simple like that.
No, I mean, I know I've heard that those roles are, the people who are doing those, those stipends, so they get to them are in demand, right? I mean, right, they really are. And like you even mentioned before, a lot of the issues are software issues and people trying to understand how to. Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Oh, I did have one more tech, back on the number of computers, uh, uh, back on the, we talked about the goals kind of for the students. The goals for the teachers, I know we're moving more to laptops with them just to have that flexibility. Is, is the goal just a laptop for, per teacher? I'm assuming, okay.
Yeah, that, that's, you know.
How close are we to that, I guess?
Well, it, we, and it, it was based off of, we did a pilot project at Wilbur Middle School, and we took a third of the teachers and gave them laptops. And again, this goes into a discussion of do they expect to work? And I was, my first concern is I was expecting, you know, if a teacher had a laptop, they were gonna take it home and they'd be working till all hours of night, it would be expected. Well, we didn't see that, you know, we saw them take it home and they'd work a couple of hours finishing. Well, we didn't see that, you know, we saw them take it home and they'd work a couple of hours finishing up stuff, you know, so they could be at the house instead of, you know, at the school without the family. So that seemed to work out well. So yes, so that, based on committee discussions and everything else, that's what we came with. We need a, a device per teacher so that they have that flexibility. Or if they needed to go down the hall and, you know, collaborate with another teacher or have a small group, they could just pick it and go. And so it, it seems to be a, a true asset that they need to have based on what we studied at Wilbur Middle School. So that's the goal is high school and middle schools will have those when they start the year. And then spacing it out so not everything comes to do at the same time in three or four years. We're doing the middle or intermediate schools and elementary schools, October, November is when we're targeting those arriving. So then by December, all of the teachers will have new laptops that they can move around with them.
And all wireless to the new project, through the new screens and stuff?
Yes, yes. So though with, we've already implemented at Spring Creek, the new displays, I mean, they're, they're emulating what we have at Riverbend and Wilbur and Pecan Trail already. But Spring Creek, they've already recognized the teachers have just received it and they realize they don't have to go to a computer because it's got essentially an Android phone built into it. So if they want a web browser or whatever, it's all on the board. So you really don't need a computer. So, which was the goal.
Anything else?
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Lot of behind the scenes.
Appreciate, yeah, we do a lot.
I love technology, it's your best friend, your worst enemy, depends on the day. That's the way I look at it. So I appreciate it.
I was going to do a video, be honest with you too, but then I'd sort of look and I go, it's just a video of a closet, so. So Ms. Schaefer showed me up, but I didn't have really anything to show, so.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Right.
I did have the
All right, well, we appreciate it. If nothing else, that brings us to adjournment.